Representative here of strength, we thank you for our citizenry, take care of them. We thank you for the many blessings in our community. Christ name.
Amen.
Thank you, Les. Okay. We'll call this meeting to order at 6:02. Roll call.
Mayor Hicks.
President.
Councilor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilor Vasquez.
Here.
Councilor Lucero.
Yeah.
Councilor Padilla.
Yeah.
Will you please join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hoorah! Approval of the agenda, I don't need to take anything off. Does anybody need to take anything off? I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez, Councilor Lucero, Councilor Padilla.
Yes.
Thank you. Citizens to address, the council, Les Gates.
The council may approach, I have some.
Yes, please.
Let me get your hand up.
Yeah.
Do you need a copy?
So, thank you all for listening to my, thank you mayor, Laura, and our city manager, I apologize, and councilman. You know what, I'm gonna kind of redo this and if I stutter or stumble, you'll know why, but, you know, it's probably safe to say that I've attended more US Forest Service meetings than anybody in the community. I literally have spent hundreds of hours in Forest Service meetings. The general public has no idea the internal battle that goes on to protect our national forests and our public lands. The mayor and a group of us are often exposed to the workings of US Forest Service and the general public is not. You know, public statements from the Forest Service are often watered down and they may or not be fact based in reality. But I continue to believe that we are working in the best interest of our community. Often, the only way we get the wheels rolling and back on track is to be outspoken. It's a shame our current culture does not always allow civility. It would have been safe to say a few years back, I would have been opposed to it, but, you know, maybe I've always been that naive and it takes some outgoing spokesmen to change that. You know, we are, you know, we are in constant tension to protect our watersheds, access, and manage our public lands. You know, why does the city care about our public lands? Public lands are a huge economic engine for our communities. You know, look at Moab, look at Sedona, look at many of the small towns around Utah and Colorado, their economic engine is their public lands. So, I'm kind of trying to justify why I was irritated and why the mayor was irritated. So, if you'll turn the page, you'll see there's a little circle on the left-hand side and it says July 1985. Kind of shake your head if you see that. Okay? That's the forest plan of 1985. And then if you'll turn the next page over, you can see it will say where it's highlighted. Will ordinarily be revised on 10-year cycles or at least every 15 years. You see that? So, you know, that was written in 1985 and I went to grants high and so I'm not really that good at math, but that's a long time ago, okay? So, we're behind schedule. So, I'll kind of explain to you where we are now. In November, in 2012, we started a process. The process allowed local landscapes teams to become foreign and so those landscape teams were, you remember the MOU that was signed in 2012 and I think you passed another one just a few weeks ago? The landscape teams are made up of cooperating agencies. Those agencies are government, land grants, tribal, soil conservation, actually the New Mexico Game and Fish, and finally the US Forest Service staff. This includes, but not limited to, sub-agencies within the Forest Service and Laura, you can always help me out a little bit if you forget somebody, but timber, wildlife, vegetation, recreation, forest management. Hi. The forest planner and then countless people that would come and go during this meeting. The Mount Taylor Landscape Team was extremely aggressive in completing their task. In fact, we were ahead of everyone else. We kind of like, were like the ones that had the star on their name beside their name, beside their name on the board. We led the charge in completing the documents. Private citizens verified landmarks. The local universities helped with ag studies, New Mexico Game and Fish helped with the wildlife studies. We completed the landscape, completed, I'm sorry, the landscape teams helped complete the wilderness inventory. We have GIS data, that's a little pin on like the map of exactly where all this stuff is. In fact, the Forest Service lost that data and we, our local team was able to present that to them again. But somewhere along. Les, right there, didn't the Forest Service lose it for like a year and a half before they ever admitted that they lost it? They just kept saying. Yeah, they lost it for a long time and finally, you know. And finally you said, "We don't have it no more, would you please give us another copy?" Yes, so we sent all the files and plugged it back in. But somewhere along the line, the Forest Service changed the rules. So, the rule change went something like this. If you, you know, to the untrained eye at 50 feet, if it looks like wilderness, it should be considered. So, at the immediate time, I said, "Where is the science in this?" And I think Laura might have been there present also. Where is the science in this? If somebody from, you know, Egypt comes in and looks at it and says, not that there's any bad people from Egypt, okay, but from Egypt and says, "Those saltcedars look like wilderness," then it could possibly be considered. So, invasive species, weeds, noxious weeds, those could be considered if you didn't have a clue. So, we were involved in that process, then we received hundreds and hundreds of comments. So, the comment, we spent time, we went through these, the comment period, actually, we kind of put them in buckets or little cans. This was about wolves, this was about wilderness, this was about timber. And we received letters from all over the world. So, there for a while, we do like a little internet search and we would check to see if these people actually even existed. Some did and some didn't. So, so after that process, all of a sudden, it stopped. Our whole process stopped. I don't know why it stopped and I don't know the real reality of why it stopped, but they gave it. Well, you know, what they told us why it stopped, but it doesn't jive with the, what's going on on the ground. Yeah, they told us that they were doing a parallel between the other forest districts that all the terminology had to match. So, the terminology would have been like, in our district, we said firewood and their district, they said fuelwood. And so, that was the excuse they used. Bushes and brush. So, and bushes and brush. So, they changed, it was really peculiar. So, if you will look, you can see that on the next page, you can see our timeline and it started in 2012. Okay, now, this is, this is the website right underneath here so that you know that I'm not on bad drugs, that this is the real truth. So, this is the website, I just pulled this off last week. So, if you look through this, November 2012 and you go progress through it and then you can see where I've highlighted where we stalled. So, we stalled in fall of 2016 and we received no information, we were literally stalled. They kept saying, "It's gonna come out, it's gonna come out," and it didn't come out. So, if you've spent a lot of hours working on this, your frustration level is at a great amount. You start getting ticked off, "Where is the information? Why isn't this working?" So, then we had another meeting, actually, the Mount Taylor Zuni Mountain Collaborative had a meeting and they said that it'll be another two years before it comes out. So, that like inflamed me because why, you know, add another two years to this, we're, it's crazy. So, a long story short is, we have a soft date of Labor Day that the draft will be released. You know, I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but we pray it will be. You know, once again, why is that important to the city? Is that all major projects are pending the release or the completion of the Forest Service Plan. So, any projects like a road project, any major projects that would change our landscape of our area are dependent on it. So, you'll say, "Well, they're doing road maintenance, they're doing stuff along the mountain now." That's really primarily because of Alvin White here and the activity that he has because he's an awesome forest ranger that we have here, he is trying to help us. But up the food chain, we can't do anything else unless this Forest Service Plan is done. So, we cannot amend the travel management and no projects. So, to just kind of give you a little perspective, in 1980, the first mountain bike trail was created in Moab. Okay, right now, they have over 850 miles. You know, I don't have a clue how many off-road miles they have. So, they have lots of Jeep trails, they have lots of four-wheel-drive trails, they have all kinds of cool trails. Okay, and I know that Laura and some people in this room have spent a lot of time on the Zuni Mountain Trails. Okay, they started back, wait, Laura.
2009.
Okay, 2009. Right now, we have 56 miles and I believe none of those are in Sebola County, they're all in McKinley County. Now, there's hope because there's money funded for the Zuni Mountain Trails, but, you know, I don't know if I've been able to live long enough to ever actually get to ride on any of those trails because they're so far behind. So, I mentioned that, you know, two weeks ago, they said that we are stalled, I said that's outrageous. The landscapes teams have served their purpose with what they told us. The reason the landscape teams are important is because it gives a collaborative, a partnership with the local governments to work directly with the Forest Service. So, we are on the same plane as the Forest Service, people from Malon, Sebola County, and Grants. We were in the same room, working together. So, our local government has an impact on the Forest Service Plan. There's no backroom deals because, I don't know if you were here during the travel management time, but the travel management, there was lots of things that happened that didn't help our community one bit. So, you know, I cannot say that our community is not, you know, I've been active with the Forest Service. We literally have had hundreds of people show up to Forest Service meetings. I believe they estimate there were 700 people at one of our Forest Service meetings. You know, we have to keep the faith and continue to make our voice be heard because they have an endless supply of your money and they can wear us to a frazzle because you get tired of going to meeting after meeting after meeting. So, you know, we need people to attend meetings, we need people to become active, promote our community and our interests. So, if you have a group that's interested in, you know, like an off-road group, a horse riding group, whatever, we need you to become active and come to the Mount Taylor Zuni Mountain Collaborative. It's every month, it's Coyote, I mean, every other month, it's the Coyote Dale Mountain Bike, I think the next one's August 14th is what I have written down here. You know, my final thought in passing is, you know, I am confident that if you become involved, a fire will grow in your belly, very similar to what the mayor spoke to and what I feel. And I think Mr. Pini was during a meeting that we had at the library with Representative Pierce and even our representative was exasperated with the types of stories we were being told. Excuses and blatant lies that we were being told that they were exposed to. So, that was all, that's what I wanted to share with you tonight is to show that there is a reason for the concern, there is a reason for a fire and to be, you know, fervent about what we believe to protect our areas and to add to our areas. So, anyway, that's all I have. Any, you having questions and I'll, I'm done. Any questions? I got, I got a little add-on to it. Actually, what they have done with this area, you know, surrounding areas, they have violated the federal law governing wilderness areas because they have to include the science in it. And yet, over the last few years, they've taken the science out of it. And if it looks pretty, then it can qualify no matter what's on the ground in there. But they've been lying to us for years about this and we finally got them to admit this, okay? Hang on. We finally got them to admit this in a meeting with Steve Pierce. And the congressman was not happy because they cannot violate federal law when they do that, but they have been doing that. Go ahead and stand up, identify yourself for the record.
My name is Pierce.
Come on up here to the mic.
I just have a question, you're referring to they.
They, I said the talking heads at the Forest Service. Cal Joyner, Elaine Corman, and Steve Hoopinbach, those are the three I'm referring to, okay? So, make sure that that's in the newspapers.
Albuquerque.
No, okay, those are the, I call them talking heads. Because that's all they do. They don't, they don't give us anything, they lie to us right to our faces, guys. They were lying to the congressman on Friday and when we caught him on it, the congressman went off. It was something to see, wasn't it Fred? It was something to see, guys. But I mean, it's just blatant what's been going on. I apologize for the people that I offended with my words that were in the Sebola Citizen, but I don't take them back because that's what they've been doing to us for 32 years. Lying to our faces, just crapping on us and doing nothing to help us. Now, we finally get one here that is helping us, his name is Alvin White here, okay? Look at 50, look at 139, look at 239, look at all the roads that he's doing. Look at everything he's done to help us, kept our forest open so we could have our Jeep event and our bicycle events and stuff, okay? And they want to get rid of him. Why? Because he's working with the public. And when I called him on it, they all said, "No, no, no, it's rumors." But when I talked about a lie detector because they're all federal employees, well, they all of a sudden have nothing to say, okay? And I'm telling you now, when I speak to Steve Hoopinbach and he lies in my face and I speak to Les and I speak to Ronnie and I speak to Larry Wynn, these guys I've known from this community for my whole life, who do you think I'm gonna believe? Some Forest Service employee that's been lying to me for 30 years? And not necessarily him, because it's been all of them. Since 1984, when I came home to the Marine Corps, to present date, it's been every one of them. And we've been fighting this battle since I came home in 84, trying to get a travel management plan in place and here we are, 2018, and we still ain't got it, guys. So, I'm sorry if I offended people with my words, but I'm still fired up about this because the last thing we need is wilderness. It's the same thing I told them at the committee hearings for the Natural Resources for the state of New Mexico. Anytime you turn it to wilderness, you lose every single natural resource that's there. I don't care what it is. So, thank you, Les, I appreciate it. Okay. Now, nobody else want to do, address the council? Yes, Mr. Pines, please step up and address the council. I'm gonna write you down, you sign then, Ronnie.
I'm starting, my name's Ronnie Pines. I didn't know this would be a topic, but I did know what Les just stated, I've been to a lot of the meetings, no one's been to as many as Les has. A couple of back points, the new appointee, Steve Hoopinbach, sorry for mispronouncing his name. For the record, he is an attorney.
That's not a forester.
That has brought him up to deal with the Lions, NMS Eagle County, so everybody knows that. That's how desperate they are to deal with us.
That's right.
That's what they've done. The other thing, just a quick statistic Les hit on about Moab, you've been there, a lot of people have. I talked to an 82-year-old lady when it there in March, first time I ever been, and the first time that they had a Jeep Jamboree, they had 10 Jeeps. That's how it started. I don't know how many thousands they have now.
Oh, they got a bunch.
Anyway, that's all I have to say. And I'm gonna be involved with this, with the mayor, with village, county, because I'm tired of the same thing. I'm tired of being told one thing and done another. That's exactly it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Thank you. Okay, item number one, vote of discussion of charter compliance, we are not in compliance. Okay. Approval of the seat of council meeting from minutes from 6:25:18. I didn't see any corrections, did anybody else? I'll approve, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, please councilman, from 6:25:18.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds, yes? Councilor Vasquez? Councilor Lucero? Councilor Padilla? Yes. Thank you. Report. Brittany. Not Chris, Brittany. Come on, that was a good one.
Hello, mayor, council people, and Laura. This is just a real quick overview of what we did in 2017 and 18 in our marketing plan. The first thing on our list, this is a project we have in progress and we talked about it a couple times at previous updates with 266 and things. Our east welcome sign is built, it's ready to be placed. The street department has ordered or is ordering equipment to place it. Over, you know, the median, that's when you drive into town.
We're taking out the old one.
Right. We're removing the old one and this is the new sign. The picture that's up there doesn't have the logo, but it is.
It's the city logo.
Right. So, that link, Route 66 and Signet is where our logo will be and that's what our sign will look like. So, it's ready to be placed and we're just ordering the equipment to place it. These are some new informational signs that we've put up around town or are going to put up around town. Just informational signs, the Riverwalk fishing signs, those have been placed underneath. Some current signs that ask for people not to place trash in the park and things like that, so those are up and we're continuing to update those as we go. We did the library signs as well, the big sign and the words that are on the building, we had those done this year as well. These are some of the banners that we have placed. We're currently working with NMSU is placing banners on First Street. The city has agreed to place the equipment so we can update those banners, but NMSU is gonna have banners down First Street.
On this one right here, we had the public complain about our flags on Santa Fe Avenue across from flags. Okay? Let's look at getting flags that have a pirate on it. Okay, something that's colorful, red and black, GHS Grand High School with pirate on it. See what, see if we can.
That's what we did, but we put them on second street.
Yes, I seen them, I seen them coming up second street.
The ones on Santa Fe will be more like.
Yeah, they'll be, well, I would rather have them as a regular flag, like the United States flag where we don't have to put those things in there. It's just a flag, like the one that the ROTC carries. It's just a big pirate head flag. And if we could get some smaller flags, like we got the closing crossbones ones, but that, that upset some members of the public. If we put something with a pirate head, GHS, that's colorful, that doesn't look like it's a poison sign, I'll bet you we'd get a positive response from it.
Well, and that's when our marketing committee decided, that we decided to put them on second, in that area by the school.
Yeah, and that's fine. I'm talking about out here on Santa Fe Avenue, so take a look at it, okay? Go ahead, Brittany, start your inter.
Go ahead, there's a question here.
Go ahead.
I just wanted, I mean.
Go ahead.
The one problem that we have with the regular signs or the regular flags on Santa Fe is unfortunately, we lose a lot of those.
They go out, no. I got one at my house.
There's no way.
Off the street.
Yeah, there's no way to secure them and it would be the same with the pirate flags. So, if we were to leave them out for any amount of time, because even when we have the American flag out just two or three days, we usually lose anywhere from four to six.
Okay.
And we did lose a couple of these, but they're not as much, so they're more likely to stay out for two.
Yeah, those ones don't blow down very easy. You know, and of course, we want to, I mean, we don't want them out during the summer when there's no school on, but like when you've got the holiday hoops tournament, okay? You've got homecoming, special events, you know, like that, you've got the district track meeting, things like that going on, that's when I like to see it, you know? The ones up and down First Street, Second Street all the time, you bet, on Santa Fe Avenue, okay? Just something to think about. Thank you. Because I've been, been meaning to bring you that flag too, because it's behind the door, my front door of my house. Go ahead, Brittany.
So, we've gone to the same marketing events and booths that we've had in the past. We haven't had any new ones come up, but we still continue to look for new events around the state that are available to go to and market the city of Grants. This was us at the county day at the state fair. This was the Blumenfiesta and this was the Silver City Trail Days, Trail Days CDT event because we are a continental divided community. And when we went to their event, they were excited to see us there. A lot of people knew that we were a part of the continental divide and picked up information because they were excited to know that the brewery, Elkins RV Park, is willing to do showers for the hikers and they were excited that that was the newest information that we could offer them, that they were able to take showers out there and that we did have public transportation. These are some of the print advertisements that we are doing or have done for 2017 and This is the newest advertisement and it's the most exciting. There's a magazine called Root Magazine that started in February, March this year. We've been in it from the beginning because they've made us such a good offer and so we have full-page ads going for the next three months. So, we've been in their magazines since they started and we've gotten plenty of response. We've gotten some tour groups that have contacted us because they saw our ad in this magazine, so. And we were nominated for Best Print Campaign, Outstanding Event, and Outstanding Attraction at the New Mexico Top Hat Awards, the Hospital Lee and Tourism Awards. We did win for Outstanding Attraction for the Route 66 Neon Drive Thru. So, that was a big deal this year. The next event is in November of 2018, so we should nominate and look at our print campaigns and our radio campaigns for this year so we can keep nominating our community. These are the numbers for the Neon Drive Thru. This is since 2016. When I did my last presentation, it was 9,000 was the number and this is how much we've had since then.
Sorry, 56. How many counts is that?
Our radio ads are the same, it's KDSK, KMYN, and ESPN Radio in Albuquerque. These are some of the basic ads that we've had success with, the Mother's Day brunch that we did at the golf course, the Cinco de Mayo adoption event, the animal park we did. And then now, we're advertising our Rockin' Riverwalk and our Reals of the Riverwalk and our advertising is doing really, really well. It's getting out there to the communities that are smaller in Sebola County and bringing people into the city for these events. We're currently updating our app. It was kind of dormant for a few months because of the changeover. The app was owned by Blue Bridge Advertising and is now owned by Visit Apps and they didn't tell us they were switching and that our app wouldn't be working. And so, because of that, they worked with the chamber and the city and gave us a little bit more advertising and more time on their app. So, this will be updated. Me, Chris, and Tammy are currently working on this. But it is updated, the notifications are coming to your phone and they are working, so please tell people to download the app, it's free. Currently, our next projects and our projects and plans that we have include the Neon Park and we've talked about this before, where we want to place all of the neon signs and update them and have them lit up in a, in a whole area where people can get out of their cars and walk around and take photos of the signs that were a big deal on Route 66 and are currently not working or not lit up and so we'd like to place that in a, in a central area. And that's it. Those are some of our ideas and do we have any questions?
Start, Fred, Brittany.
The other day, I was coming to City Hall and this gentleman, I'm gonna take a picture over here at the, and he asked me, "How come you guys don't have something like ours?" Like a John Wayne potion or a flywheel, you stick your face there, take a picture, or this or that, because they have those, I don't know, 66s and those, I guess it's all just, I don't know, I don't know.
We've had that come up, like, we wanted to do that at some of our booths.
Yeah, so, side there, like a John Wayne, you stick your, like, face in, take a picture, you know? Yeah. I like John Wayne, man. Or this or that. I don't know.
That is an idea.
Elvis.
That is an idea that we've had come up and we've talked about it, but it just hasn't come around, so I'll bring that up at the next 266 meeting, I'll put that on the agenda.
Another question, I have, Laura, but I'm gonna ask you. Do you need a New Mexico fishing license to fish or?
I don't know that.
Yes, you do. You need a Mexico fishing license because it is stocked by the New Mexico Game and Fish.
Okay, I'll, it's a, it's average age.
Oh, it doesn't matter, we've got.
Anybody can fish, 12 or above needs a license, I believe, either 12 or 13.
Okay.
12.
12 would love for a license. Okay, any, Sidney? Manny, Rick?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys are doing good. Okay. Mountain states contractors. Mountain State's contractors, PO amendment. Talk to us there, dog. What it is, what it is, remember I was arguing about putting a tax in on it? That's what it is.
Tax should not change.
Just to pay the tax that was there on it.
Actually, it was handled by someone else, uh...
And since the project's complete, we need to pay the tax.
And actually, there's no added cost to the city here, it's all under the, it's all covered, so, yeah. So anyway, we, the tax was not added on the PO, and we just said, we need that. It's of the amount that had become your council, so it's, it's good.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion for three hundred, three thousand, five hundred, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents to Mountain State's contractors amended PO number zero two seven three two one.
I made a motion to approve the, of course, the tax of three hundred, three thousand, five hundred, thirty-seven, about fifty-two cents to the PO of zero two seven three two one for Mountain State.
Second. Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Yes.
Rick? Rick? Thank you. Next. We're doing a redo on the list, eh?
Yeah, there was just some language that was not correct in the, in the last council meeting. Uh, number one, it's a CES vendor, so we needed to add the one percent. And, uh, there, there was no RFP, it was put out to bid. And we received two bids from two CES vendors. Uh, so the amount, the award amount is two hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred thirty dollars. Rather than the two thirteen, I believe it was two thirteen, the last council meeting.
And it's for SmithCo still?
I thought it was even called a CES.
It's to CES, which is a, SmithCo is a CES vendor.
Okay, so it's, we approved it for SmithCo.
Okay, yeah.
So now we need to prove it for, for CES.
Correct.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to change that to CES for SmithCo.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna make a change, uh, we, uh, make a motion to change that to CES.
Two hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred thirty dollars.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Manny, Rick?
Yes.
Fred?
Thank you.
Next. Barbara, you wanna stand there, on the animal board?
Yes, I do.
I'll entertain a motion to put Barbara back on the animal board. Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Counselor DiSaro?
Counselor Pali?
Cool. The next ones, we got, uh, two for the library board. One is a reappointment. And she is Ms. McDowell. And the other one is Bobby Gallegos, he will be the new one from Milan. We've had a hard time getting somebody from Milan. And so I sat down and had a nice little talk with Bobby. And he says he'll do it, so we'll go ahead and we'll take him if you guys approve it.
So, who's gonna leave?
No, we, we haven't had anybody, we haven't had anybody from Milan for a while.
We had a replacement for Rio Con.
Is it a replacement?
Yes, okay.
So there's still gonna be five?
Yes, Bobby Gallegos is replacing her for Milan.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions? I'll entertain a motion on both of those. That's McDowell and Bobby Gallegos for the, sorry, for the library board.
Yeah, I make a motion to, um, Bobby Gallegos and Bobby McDowell for the library board.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Counselor DiSaro?
Yes.
Counselor Fred Pali? The last one for the personnel review board.
I have a question on this one also.
Go ahead.
It looks like I volunteered.
I volunteered you!
You kind of, you find these owners?
Uh, I have a little board, you know, and I volunteer.
Yes, I volunteered you.
This, this is not a happy board.
No, it's not a very happy board. No, it's not.
I'm dropping down the pipe, come on.
Do you want off this board, is that what you're saying? It's up to you, if you want off, we'll, we'll, we'll appoint somebody else, it's no big deal. We'll, we'll do it next to me.
Well, we gotta do it too.
Yeah. Yeah, cause it's coming down, it's coming.
I really think you would be really good on that part. No, I mean, it is hard. That decision has to be made, but I think you would be good.
So I can just continue on with the thumbs down to Sidney Reynolds? Okay?
Hey, no problem, I get, I get that a lot. As the mayor, I get that thumbs down a lot, no sweat. You can't make everybody happy, so don't try.
It's like trying to compete. I think if, if they're talking about me...
They won't be talking about me.
Will be talking about somebody else, somebody else can impress.
It's up to you. You're, you're good with it then?
Fine.
Oh, okay, I'll entertain a motion for Sidney Reynolds. As the counselor and Ray Ray. From the, from the, from the, okay?
Uh, first and foremost, I would like, make a motion for Sidney and Ray Ray.
Cool. Counselor Reynolds?
Massive.
Great. Thank you, Sidney, thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Uh, Laura, do you got anything?
Thank you.
Sidney? We're at comments, we're ready to get out of here, guys. Manny? Rick?
Yeah, I'm, I keep harping on this baseball field that we haven't completed yet. I'd like to see it get done, you know, this is pretty, pretty quick because it, this field hasn't been done for...
Years.
Years. I mean, the only, only one field that has not been done that to me it's a nice one. And, but not utilizing a field, one of our assets. People can't use it, the tournaments or whatever, so I'd like to see us complete it, like, tomorrow.
So which field is this one?
It's the back one, it would be the northeast field. As you sit in Wells Park, as you drive in, you got the men's softball field over here, it's that northeast one, the back. The far northeast. It's basically for Sandy Kovacs, right? For the bigger kids. And we think you get it done, I agree.
You can cut it off and use it for little, you know, whatever.
T-ball, whatever.
So what has to be done?
We need to, everything on it.
We didn't budget that this year, um, it came up after budget time. So the last field that we did at Wells Park, we put in the Y C C grant, so all it cost us was materials. The youth conservation corps put in the sprinkler system and the saw. And so it was, it didn't cost very much at all, just PVC pipe and, um, saw. So if we hire somebody to put this there, we're looking at about two hundred thousand. And I'm basing that off of the soccer field at, um, Future Foundation.
And that baseball field's a little bigger than that.
Yes.
It'll cost more. Actually, that baseball field's quite a bit bigger than that. Sure is. So let's just plan, well, it ain't, obviously, we didn't put it in the budget, so we're gonna have to miss it. Um, we could go ahead and, and start it right now and make sure that it happens next year with the Y C C and all that too. And put that as our top priority in our parks. I don't have a follow-up for that. There's just no way to make it happen now without, with the two hundred thousand dollar bill on it. Plus not putting it in the budget is kinda...
I was in the impression we were, uh, we were, uh, going after...
Looking after Y C C, do it, yeah?
That barely doesn't happen.
Um, I don't think they've gotten their notification on the next grant. I don't remember if we had put in that field or not. I think we may have, but let me check. That was actually the damage center that puts in that grant. Of the city.
Anything else? Rick?
No, I just got a question.
Excuse me?
You know, they did that job in front of us and through there. Did we have, did we have those city guys studying why?
We did.
They used our, they used our, you know, lay-down machine?
I, I think they actually may have used their own after all.
Oh, did they?
They were gonna use our lay-down machine, but I think they might have...
No, they got their speed.
They got their speed. But our guys did, um, in fact, um, our two head guys met with me this last week and they did take the crew over and they watched and helped what they could. But they were very pleased because they felt like our crews, um, were up to speed with what they were doing. So they were very pleased to see that their, their skill level is, is right up there with this group. These guys, that's all they do is paving.
Yeah.
In our region, and so...
And they, it, they had some problems. Their lasers weren't working correctly on their, on their machine. So they were going from a two-inch level all the way down to a half-inch level and so they had to recover.
And for one thing, they had the, the traffic control messed up.
Yeah.
But there was a state, baby.
Yeah, that was the state.
It wasn't our guys.
I know, but...
Okay, but the state always comes down on us, what, too?
We're, we're starting on Mountain Road on Monday. They will start zipping up Mountain Road and it's hopefully the next week we'll start.
And that's another one, we got all the pipes done underground, guys.
Yes.
Mountain Road, and then Sage. Those should be the ones with all the pipes in the ground, right? Cause we did Sage, right? Take my day.
Yeah, we did water, I don't know if the sewers done on Sage.
But that's, that sewer's fairly, you know, Sage. Anything else? My God, that's something. Um, where are we at on the artillery piece?
I, um, only have a, a, a mail contact, so I sent two letters asking, you know, what's happened with the request, like, not gotten anything back.
You don't have a phone? I'll, I'll, I'll take off on that one there then. Um, I'm gonna mention two people here today that nobody in this room knows. The first one is called Joseph Maciel of South Gay, California, twenty years old. Uh, he was the latest casualty in our war in Afghanistan, okay? And you'll not see it in the media, which really pisses me off. Okay, you gotta search to find these guys that are dying for this country. And so what I did here is I went ahead and I started, October seventh in two thousand and one is when we basically kicked off the nine eleven war. Okay, after they blew up the Twin Towers. We lost twelve in two thousand and one, forty-nine in two thousand and two, forty-eight in two thousand and three, fifty-two in two thousand and four, ninety-nine in two thousand and five, ninety-eight in two thousand and six, a hundred and seventeen in two thousand and seven, a hundred and fifty-five in two thousand and eight, three hundred and seventeen in two thousand and nine, four hundred and ninety-nine in two thousand and ten, four hundred and eighteen in two thousand and eleven, three hundred and ten in two thousand and twelve, fifty-five in twenty thirteen, twenty-two in twenty fourteen, fourteen in twenty sixteen, fifteen in twenty seventeen. And as of today, July ninth, twenty eighteen, we've lost two. This is only in Afghanistan, okay? I didn't include Iraq. I didn't include the special operators in Syria, Yemen, Beirut, any of these other places where people are dying, Mogadishu. Okay, this is just Afghanistan, guys. And the one thing that blew me away today is Mr. Jalen Watts Jackson. A Michigan State University defensive back, picked to go in the first round of the NFL draft